10 o'clock, September 29, 2014, so all this can be ordered. I'm J.B. Rollcall.
Eric.
Murphy.
Eric.
Decker.
Eric.
Don, Eric. I'm Craig. We will finish the last grade of meeting, September 22, 2014. I'll try to make my press more regular.
Do you know if that's a warning or a... Well, I didn't see anything wrong with them. I'll make a motion unless you find it. It is you.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All okay. Finish the group. Item four, approval of payroll warrants to fund.
Make a motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item five, discussion possible action regarding recognition order for the other benefit of the court clerk. Midstate, Sand Ridge, Rockville, Kestate, and Howardville.
I'll make the motion to approve Rockville. For D.C. All on my end.
Sorry.
Just because they're recycled.
I'll make the motion on mine for Sand Ridge and Atlas. Second.
Did I get a second on theirs?
Either gentleman.
You did? I did.
We're all in favor.
All in favor of Sand Ridge?
Uh, in my opinion, Atlas.
I'd like to request the permission from Bruton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Temple Williams, get down item 16. Everybody, F.O.A. Discussion possible action regarding recognition order for the other benefit of the court clerk. Get the floor, Helen.
Do you have my letter of recommendation? I got to recommend that Stacy Davy be appointed to this position because of her qualifications and the fact that she has spent 20 years in the office working for me. And the girl said, "Man, she must have personal merits to work for me that long." And that was it, really. What we're looking at today is computer skills. I didn't get that put in my recommendation here, but it is so necessary at this time to have computer skills where we're facing an entirely new jury program. Those summons will be issued out of the state of Washington now, and all be done on the computer. You don't even get to talk to anybody. If they call in and want to be excused, they don't call us. They're going to be calling an anger number in the state of Washington. All of it goes through the unit where we don't get to either look at the names. That's the main function. Her other duties would, of course, be her willingness to serve the public. We must always look for that and her ability to do whatever they need to have done, whether it's a passport or traffic ticket or anything of that nature. Those things do require a lot of patience. This gal has the patience to do that and the knowledge. She's gone to all the schools that she would love to go to. So at this point, we feel like she is the most qualified individual to serve in this position. Any questions anyone might have about her or about the office?
I don't know what I do. Judge, who are you going to add?
If I had a vote, I certainly would cast it for Stacy Davy. She is well-qualified. She is a hard worker. She is always, always helpful to everyone that comes in.
So that was a lot of support here. They're standing all over the room and seated here. I would make the recommendation to appoint Stacy Davy. That being effective today after your official final day.
1:115 is when she would take over.
Let's say that day only 15 minutes, and that would be my motion to appoint Stacy.
Give a second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes. The office will continue to run efficiently. There should not be any bumps in the vote or pickups. It will just proceed on as usual. And we do thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very much. This will take care of it. Do you have anything?
That's right.
Another minute's clock, everyone else should be...
Right.
Well, we're going to miss soon your round here when that day comes, but I'll be gone too, so I guess we'll go out together.
Oh, but we're going to have a party first. We're going to have that party. And Kate. I've been talking to Kate.
No, I have an idea, but they say no. I can do that.
I'm joking. That's the only thing.
Oh, you know I like that.
I know. I've been in some of them.
Those are the laws.
And they're hollering already upstairs. Five of eight of us was the same group.
I could make some, bring some down anyway.
Your community service.
Well, we stopped having a blood drive at the church, so, you know, I don't need to beg people for that anymore, so they're in line for people's. As many as I can get them.
We thank you, gentlemen, much. I guess we'll take you out.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all very much. Goodbye. Thank you. Appreciate it. Considerate. Yeah, we're here too. We're going to go into 15 while these guys are here. We can get back four.
Moving on to item 15, discussion possible action regarding brush rig for Alpha Party Department. Well, probably we've been behind the one brush rig out of county general for a while. I think last year we did that about December. It was about the time we bought that truck, I think. Now, I guess as my understanding is, if I understand it right, you guys are in line for the next one. Is that based on what the Woods County Fire Fighters Association said?
Sounds good. Actually, I wouldn't order it yet. I mean, I think we've got to get the budget approved first, so...
No, we...
Do we get that?
Well, yes. Well, we've got to get the official. Yes, that's true with the state.
Okay, I mean, that'd be the only holdup.
That would be the only holdup, but I don't see probably another.
Can we still move forward with bids prior to that approval?
Yeah, I don't know exactly. If you have any...
That'd be her...
I'm delivering the budgets on the third to Nancy, and then it will be...
The third of October?
Uh-huh.
It's okay. Do you want a couple weeks after that?
Yeah, just a couple weeks after that.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Cabin chassis, complete bed, skid. Just put the newspapers so they know what's going on here.
It'd be a cabin chassis with a bed and a skid unit on it, and the main reason for that is because it's the most cost-effective. It costs a lot more to get a custom-built bed for a brush rig. In the past, they had been using a Butler bed, but in contact with Butler, Butler says they don't want to build any more beds with wheel wells in them. You know, man wells, wheel wells incorrect statement, the man wells. And so we've found the next best price-wise bed. Brian has more of the details on that. He's been doing a lot of the legwork on that. Anything you want to add, Brian?
I spoke with Corey Washburn at Washburn Motors on the cabin chassis, and he's still going to hold to the state bid on that as they did last year on the same cabin chassis. I've talked with Butler beds, and they're the ones that told us, you know, that as of this time, he's not building anymore. I mean, explaining to him, and he said there might be a time, he might come back to it, but as of right now, he says he's not going to build it.
We're looking at a gas rig instead of...
Thank you. I think that's the best way to go in this environment.
Several years back, a diesel seemed like it made sense, but they are known for setting fires now, just like the gas rigs.
And this is where he's going to work on it 20 years if he's still on it at that point. He's going to know for technology changes.
Once I found out with Butler on that side of it, I contacted chief fire and safety at Chickasha, just kind of got a price book from them of their standard manufactured bed with the skid unit, and just kind of had them pre-specied out, you know, which is kind of the basic package on it. But still subject to be bid out to other places.
Correct.
They're just kind of giving us a guideline of what we were looking at.
What's the plans for the one you got now? Will it just be turned back to you all in terms of what to do?
Okay, for sure.
But the whole setup is...
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it will basically be decided by the real fire chiefs where they think the need is for the machine.
Well, I understand that, but some of those, the cities own the slides and I was just curious on this one, which was...
So we'll have another truck then? We'll have somewhere. What model truck is that one you have, Brooke?
It's an O2.
O2.
So it's been a while since we got one. Thirteen and a half years old, and it's...
It doesn't seem that old. I guess it probably is.
It's had some issues. We've had it fail us recently several times due to mechanical problems, and they've been fairly easy to resolve at this point, but there's a lot of rust in the bed that's on it. The foam unit no longer works, and the pump is weak, and it's just, the whole truck's pretty tired.
I see.
Well, is... Is the foam unit, is it repairable?
We have actually had it repaired.
Well, I meant if it goes to another station, that's why I was asking. I didn't know if that was a feasible thing to fix.
I think it'd be more feasible to replace it. We had it repaired, and it didn't hold the repair work in it.
Well, I didn't know. I don't know if it's needed somewhere else or anything, but I was just curious if it was repairable.
It reached out to the point where we were reaching out to try to find it. They said it was an obsolete pump now, and it's kind of some of that stuff.
The repair was actually made with a used mark, the one the hail dealers had.
Well, I was just curious if another station could use it or what, you know, it's what...
It would still be a good truck for another department. I just think it would be taken into consideration in that.
Well, I understand that, but I didn't know if it was feasible to work on the foam part, is all I was asking. It'd be ridiculous.
But it is dependable enough for a backup truck if somebody needs one.
Currently, you know, it doesn't have much left in it, so it wouldn't be long.
Then your price would be using it for four, five months for today forward, and it was in service, so who knows between now and then.
Well, do you want to go ahead and go out for bid? Are you going to wait until the budget comes in, or what are you going to do on that?
Whatever Shelley says, I'm good with them to go. I mean...
They could probably go ahead and start the bid process.
I'll make the motion.
We'll go ahead and get the bid super started. Is that motion in favor?
I'm making the motion for these guys to proceed on, get the bid packet, turn it down to our purchasing agents, get the claim bid.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go, guys.
Well, they're still here normally, and our economic talks here lately before, but it's not the damn fire account to buy these. It's coming out of county general.
It's about county general purchase.
They're coming out of extra sales tax for us by all these extra people in the country last year.
We've been doing that, what, three or four years now, five?
Yeah, this is probably the fourth or fifth one.
Fourth or fifth one we've done that.
We're just trying to rotate them so they aren't all the same year trucks.
Well, they're...
They're going to a different county part of our...
Yeah, we've got six, and we've been trying to...
Their repair bill's went down drastically because we got these narrow ones in there, and our M&amp;O account works a lot better. We don't get it with these purchases. You guys are good to go. Get your stuff together and see each other whenever you get your packs or specs ready to go. She'll take over from there, and then we'll be in touch whenever it's going to happen. That tanker that we got together when the engine went bad and the other one, that has really worked out well, and that is a whole lot better truck than we had, and I think it'll serve well for a lot of years. We appreciate that as well. You guys have a good one. Thanks for coming over.
All right, back to item six. Discussion possible action, District Two, buying a dozen on state contract warrant check.
What do you got? Well, I got a new dozen on the state contract, and beans, there are no set rules it seems yet on financing on state contract with the finance. I got bids from three local banks.
About the rest of the...
Freedom or Allen State, whichever one you want to call it, was the lowest interest on a five-year payout at 2.9.
Five years.
Yes, 60 months. And that's without trade.
You're not selling the open CD probably or something?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I have another county interested and price, but we've got to wait till after the first of the year, so, I mean, it can't be a done deal yet, but I do have some other interests.
They don't sell for you yet.
Yeah, and so...
Where's the paperwork for him to sign off?
Oh, there it is.
Well, it's a winter still, so it's probably on the road somewhere.
Oh, is he not coming today?
Well, he was, but he takes Maryland's report about 6:30 and said he was heading Harford County first, and then coming this way. So whether he makes it for the meeting...
Or he makes it.
Yeah.
Well, we can let it lay on hold here for right now. He's not here by time with journals. I'll put it back on next week, sign it.
We don't pay him, do we?
I just state contract, as far as I'm concerned, I've got the bids there for the financing. I mean, I don't care. It doesn't matter, but...
If we approve, you're going with Freedom State Bank at 2.9?
Really, the financing's already to prove.
Exactly.
You want to change part of the state contract?
And then Brian said he'll sign off on that sheet also. The same sheet.
I'll make the motion. We approve the financing at 2.9 for Freedom or Allen State, and whatever they call it now.
So you have a machine?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I had backup that was put on it, which had eight to $10,000, or so. Luckily, this is, and I thought it was going to be, but luckily I don't have to use death and it's... Whoever assured me I'd have to.
He said it was one of the very last two of those.
Right.
Tell him like one. I thought that was a lot of it.
We'd use it just a little like it was a trial bill, I mean, you know, and, but the guy's willing.
Yeah, I'll shoot. Item seven, discussion possible action regarding railroad highway grain crust closure, DOT 463283, RMP 334.0.
RMPs are over by post. RMPs are over by post.
I see.
I just put everything on there that I have. What this...
Can I have it again where this is?
Well, are you guys done with what you...
Yeah.
Last week when we discussed Road 380, and we're going to build a new road, this is the official closure form for that crossing we're taking out.
This will finish the back inspection.
Because I forgot to have her put that on the agenda. But this is the official form right here that goes with that closure we discussed on Road 380 last week.
I don't even think I need to write it out since we're already publicized and you let it go.
It's just a contract, basically.
So this is the official closing of 380?
Yes, south of Grady, that lawns your state. And you missed out on last week, but we're going to put in the paperwork. They're going to buy a strip of land on the east side of existing main, and we're going to build us a new road right there, and we're going to go up to Grady and use that crossing. It's on flat surface.
I see.
So we're basically close one, but they're doing all the expense to build a new road instead of getting gates and lights and all that stuff on others.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the few parts might actually be in 3.9?
No, they're all being across.
Well, you've already got a crossing, hey?
It's between 380 and Greer, Greer. It's just going along the side of the track.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we're going to do a way of the crossing, and roads is parallel to the existing track. They're about a strip of land from Mackey's, and they're going to build a fence and build the road, and we'll look at existing on Greer. It's flat.
Item eight, discussion possible action regarding entry agreement between Woods County and BNSF.
This is to allow them to work on county property, which is that new road. They just wanted to have a little piece of paper.
I mean, can we approve that last time too, Brian?
We did it around about, like, this is the paperwork, yes.
Just signing off.
I actually forgot about that when I found it. I almost put my other stuff.
Is there a motion?
I'd like that motion to approve the entry agreement. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Put the thing through on the car. I have two colors, it's one of them. Set all of them along.
Item nine, discussion possible action regarding air gas annual contract for District Three.
I'd like the motion to approve this contract as for the lease of the officer settling centers. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. ours is always off schedule on that from the ones that come off in July, one, and that way it's...
I was going to say ours are on our annual contracts. Item 18, discussion possible action regarding materials for request for District Three.
Donna came to, and he said he still had a little bit of money on Monday over for one to use it up for the chip seal job I did last summer. This is a reminder of what was left from the bridge fund, where he said he got the fire road and the payment percent of that. Now it's worth $41,000 to change.
Yeah. You're using it for what, chip seal?
Yeah, for the chip seal I did last summer. He said he'd agree and motion for part of that one.
That motion?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We will be putting that back in the CD of our account. That's where all the money came from and all the work on that.
Item nine, discussion possible action regarding dirt's copy, file that's made this week.
The trailer's office.
Okay, so clear with the copy.
The copy or coupon? Are you guys...
Come on in, state your name.
You caught, you might as well come in there.
Well, I thought maybe you'd try to go through.
How much is it? So for coffee?
I think it's per coffee, yeah. Eight cents on the paper. One and then six cents on all of them.
You're good, boys.
Take motion to approve.
I'd like the motion to approve the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, he just came last week. No, we just needed to, no. Did he leave that? Did he leave you a deal? We needed to talk about that. It was okay if they went ahead, but we just told him we needed to. Mike and I talked to him. It wasn't on the agenda then.
Supper John's land, I got it first, and then he came in later and got back to me.
Oh, okay. You're late.
Yeah.
Right.
Item 12, discussion possible action regarding utility rebate consultants.
What it is, Clint, beans, you weren't privy to it. This guy just called, and he wants to do a utility rebate that is free of charge, and they had to, Brooke or whoever, Shelley had to provide him with one month utility bill, and then this agreement we signed gives him the authority or ability to go to OGN, ONG, or whoever, and get three years of records or something. And that, oh, you understood that?
Basically, it was about the charge.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He tells us it's a no-fee deal unless they collect money.
And then they split the overpaid 50%.
I see. And they do the research to see if we were charged...
We just have to provide them the bills that we paid for one month, and then they go do all the research. They go back and check and like see if it killed what at that month, that price equaled what we got charged for, I guess.
I'm reminded, and we've done that once with the...
Yeah, I got whatever we charged first.
So we're just here to...
I'm good with it. It's a long one, but I need it.
And this is just here for...
Yeah, the officer is not going to count for that.
This is just here for board action, let him proceed.
Right. Is what I understand, just, I'll make the motion, just gives you our consent or permission.
I'm good, bud.
I'm in favor.
Just saying.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I might probably look at them. You probably adopted the guy that was history, and he's pretty passionate and he saves a bitch.
He's probably pretty sad about it, too.
I will tell you this, that you can say your name. If you want, if you want to keep a, like, a city of Alabama, or have a lot of those bills, you can tell him, don't look. You get to pick and choose. It's one I got from him. Right.
What do you sign that, should I have beer?
Second page shows, look. Now, here's, down here. I'm going to get it right here.
Yeah, that's their phone over there.
Yeah, that'd be easier. On this side, I don't really have any. Okay.
Well, when you fill it out, you have to sign it, period.
Yeah, I think I'll sign it there, get that all figured out. So I think down here is where they're going to place it. I'm going to just do the back and fill out the...
Item thirteen, discussion possible action regarding Naco Doo.
We've played them in the past, haven't we?
Yep.
I suppose.
Four fifteen.
I'm making the motion.
Second.
Play the Naco Doo's.
What's the Naco view?
National Federation of County.
Commissioners.
Officers, yeah.
All favor?
Aight.
I guess you would say, Lynn, it's kinda like belonging to the NRA, because they are the county's voice in Washington, DC.
Okay, well, you mean that.
Yes, we do, it's very important, the newspaper, we get back once a month on that, all the stuff they type. And C and D has a representative, they send all the.
They have AOPA, the aircraft owners and pilots, of course, they can, they're various.
Yeah, same deal, yeah.
Item fourteen, discussion possible action regarding search and price of the Pioneer.
Yes, and that's, you know, that, our internet, the ten, this is the same, and it's going down, you sign it for a five-year, which will have to renew each year for, you know, but, it's, um, went down quite a bit, because we was fifteen hundred, and now it's a thousand. I think it's close to fifteen hundred.
Is that also overweight?
What, what were you doing a year, about a year, is that how we had our contract before? We don't use yearly contract, about had to be.
They had to probably been, but now they're offering where you can do a year, you can sign up for five years.
Long as you.
Wouldn't we have to do it by the year?
But it has to be reviewed every year.
Right, we have to.
It was renewable, I mean.
Yeah, but.
You can't all be a future board.
Right, but if we sign up to the five-year, we'll have quite a bit of savings.
Couldn't you sign up by the level, I'd be like, that would make July one Mexico around, so see if you can keep up with.
Yeah, 'cause it'd make it a lot easier.
I got all my weapons, calm and stuff, but renew January one, or something, so, that's the actual perfect.
That's good, yeah.
I was like that, or whatever.
If you're first, first, take five-year contract, we're not gonna maybe send him a displan, but it tells him that they set it to a year or a year.
Right.
I mean, that's the, what I was getting at, because.
Right.
Over right here.
Put in a minute, so type him a little letter and send it up, well, that's why.
Just put that, that you gotta, you, or you have the option canceling every year. Right.
Right.
They're gonna say, whoever can't handle it, let's not call them.
Yeah.
Yeah. How much were you gonna save?
Five hundred a month, wasn't it?
Almost.
About five hundred a month.
Yeah.
Well, month to month is eleven hundred sixty-seven dollars, and five years by the month is a thousand eighty-two, so it'd be a hundred dollars a month, twelve hundred a year, or pretty close to.
Compared to what we paid last year, we're saving about five hundred bucks.
Okay, really, so the whole things went down?
Yeah, the whole things went down.
Oh, okay, that's right.
That's where I was coming up with that, almost.
But you were paying fifteen hundred.
Yeah, we were paying around fifteen hundred before, a little over fifteen hundred.
If they'll do that annual renewal for five years, we'll be at ten eighty-two then, per month.
Well, I'm making the motion for the five-year deal with the disclaimer saying it's just for a one-year term.
Yeah, I'll send them that minutes in the, in a note.
Second.
All favor?
Aight.
Aight.
They probably know that, I don't think that we need issue.
Well.
I guess if it is, we just have backup.
Right. 'Cause they know.
I guess we'll just approve it on our terms.
Every contract they're gonna give, they're gonna, so you have a, you know, save that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, which will be all our labor there.
Item seventeen, do you business?
Um, yes, I was presented with a letter before I could, um, actually put it on the engine, I mean, the gen had already been posted. And I'm just gonna read it, it's just a letter to the, or, um, "I am transferring my resignation to the Woods County Excise Board effective immediately, sincerely, Sharon Wong." So, I want you guys to be aware of that, no act needed, just, um, just needed to.
Do you have anybody else on there, do you have something?
I forgot one, and him.
I think she talked to everybody, John Cummins is on this stream right at the moment, I, I think he's, she's waiting for a response.
Right, I'm waiting for a response back.
The only thing we did find out was, she, she found out that they have to be, all three members have to be from Arthurian District.
I see.
Yes, I did find that out, I thought about, I didn't know that.
I just knew that, that this one appointment was ours.
Right.
And the other one's, Joe did, and the other one's taxing this shit.
Item eighteen, put a district bracket.
My motion, I guess, second.
All favor?
You know how long Sharon's been on the board?
Yeah, since West, I'm right, not too long, haven't.
Oh, Tracy was.
That's right, Tracy's.
I don't think she's been on there much over six months.
Not too long.
Eight months.
Yeah, Tracy, and then, so it hasn't been.
I think it's over six or eight months.
Yeah, I don't think it's been.
I think I.
Item nineteen, that was to join.
Oh, I didn't.
All favor?
Sorry, I thought maybe you hadn't, and I wasn't listening.